I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 15, 2025, Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Hoke, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator, your quick please.
Thank you. And thank you to you council members for a productive and helpful council retreat last week. Mark and I have started going through the direction provided during the retreat and working through the takeaways. We know the retreat days are long and we don't take for granted the time you take to attend them, but they provide very valuable guidance to us and direct us and help us lead the daily operations of the city and the vision of the city. So, thank you very much. And then renovations are nearly complete for the new human resources offices, which are being relocated to 105 East Fourth Street, which will still be part of the overall City Hall campus. And there will be a sidewalk that connects the City Hall to those offices with installed within the next few weeks. But the main offices will be off of Fourth Street with parking for staff and visitors off of Fourth Street for that. And they will be officially moved within the by the first week of office or excuse me, the first week of August, if not sooner. So, so if you need to go to those offices, just know that they'll be off of Fourth Street. And we are putting the final touches on the fiscal year 25, 26 city budget. Prior to that, though, it does look like we will need fiscal year 24, 25 budget amendment. And so, the first reading for that will be the next meeting, which is August 5. And the public hearing for that will be August 19, and the final reading will be September 2. And then with the fiscal year 25, 26 budget, which we went through the retreat to those details, the introduction will be August 19. The public hearing then will be September 2, and the final reading will be September 16. The mayor's letter that will provide all those details for the public and for everybody on that 25, 26 budget will be published in the middle of August. And the current indications that we have is that we will be well below the property tax levy threshold that requires our attendance at the additional countywide joint public hearing that is scheduled for September 18. So, that public hearing on September 2 will be our only public hearing on that budget. And then just one other final note is that there are only five Wednesdays left for our farmer's market. I can't believe the summer is going this fast. So, don't forget to get your fresh produce and goodies every Wednesday, 5 to 8 p.m., City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, seconded by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion, please vote. Motion passes. We have no items for first reading. So, item E1, ordinance 2062, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R4 multifamily residential to R4 PUD2 multifamily residential with a specific planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as a replat of lots 310 through 407 inclusive and lot outlots G through I inclusive Belterra, generally located on the southwest corner of South 114th Street and Shram Road. Applicant is Felcler Family Farms LLC, Belterra Replat 1. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. I'm trying to get this so I can get the whole screen, but I can't seem to. Okay. So, where I thought I would start here is kind of explain the history of Belterra, kind of where we've been, where we are today, and where we're going. Because I think ultimately that's how you'll understand why we're trying to do what we're trying to do. Anyway, the lots that are outlined in orange, that was under contract with Bridgewater Homes. The lots within the orange area that are actually outlined in red, Bridgewater Homes actually closed on those lots. Since that time, Bridgewater Homes completely pulled out of the entire metropolitan market. They terminated their contract and they left and they went back to Denver. And I don't think they have any plans of coming back to the metropolitan area, including Papillion. So, that's where some of these houses that some of the neighbors that showed up in opposition at first, but I think now that they understand what we're doing here within the PUD that we're going to talk about here in this particular item, we also have the preliminary plat, which is F3. There's a public hearing and vote on that a little later tonight. So, D.R. Horton actually closed on these lots here in Belterra, and those were standard size lots without the reduced side yard setbacks. And what we're proposing here is having the five-foot side yard setbacks with a PUD. And the amenity that we're having is a park here. And let's see if I can. So, this shows kind of the whole area. The PUD that we're talking about tonight is just this area here. And so, here's the park area and the trail that comes through the PUD area. So, what we explained to the neighbors and to the planning commission essentially is with the PUD, you have the design criteria for the houses. You have an amenity, which in this particular case is the park. What people didn't like about and apparently D.R. Horton had a lot of complaints, so the developer, about these lots that had the standard size lots. And when I say standard sized lots, those ranged anywhere between 75 and 85 feet in width, whereas the proposed PUD lots range between 55 and 65 lots. And this is talking about the rezoning, but also essentially the plat. And so, this PUD, what it did is there were 97 standard sized lots that are currently zoned and platted today. I mean, right now, you could go pull a building from it and build the same houses that were built here by D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton has all of these under contract. The thought was if we can create this PUD, have a nicer home, because you have the design criteria applying, we can pick up 24 lots. So, it goes from 97 lots to 121 lots in this particular area. And what that does is that reduces the overall cost of the lots, because the more density you have, the less expensive the lots become. And oh, Jason Thielen showed up here, so he's with me also if we have questions. So, the idea is to spread those development costs over more units. So, you have, you know, acquisition, you have grading costs, you have public infrastructure costs. The more units you have, the lower the overall cost, because you can spread it over more of the units. And that savings is then passed along to the ultimate consumer of the house or ultimate buyer of the house. What people didn't like about the houses that were constructed here by D.R. Horton on standard sized lots is the pretty large area. I can't find, see where that one is. Oh, right here. The large area that is between the lots, you notice, because these will be the same size houses on these PUD lots that they are on the standard sized lots. And you can see this enormous side yard between the houses. And people were apparently complaining about that. They didn't like the look. They thought it wasn't a really good utilization of the lot, because you had this giant side yards setback. And what I said earlier, just a few minutes ago, people generally don't hang out in your side yards. You don't play in the side yard. You play in the back and you use the front. So, there was a couple other photographs here, and I'm not, let me see where. Yeah, there's another one. There's another example of the incredible distance between the homes when you have a 75 to 85-foot lot in width with the D.R. Horton house on it, which, again, the lots in this particular PUD area are currently zoned and platted. They could do this where we're replating and rezoning today. So, I'll give you another couple examples. So, there, another example of the, you know, enormous side yard setback that you have between these houses. I think I have one more example. There's another example. I mean, that, to me, is not really a great look. That, I think the density of the PUD makes it dramatically better as far as a site plan is concerned. PUD exhibit, right there. So, that's what is before you tonight. Essentially, the rezoning with the PUD, reduce the side yard setbacks, create the design criteria. Because it is a PUD, create the amenity space with the park. We explained to the neighbors in a neighborhood meeting and also at Planning Commission. And Ms. Hoke was there and gave a tremendous speech, I thought, about, you know, the importance of looking at this project and letting the developer and D.R. Horton, you know, put their best foot forward essentially by having the amenity, by having the design criteria, by really having a better product and making it look better than it would on just standard sized lots. So, that's what we're asking for today. I think the neighbors kindly finally understood that. I'm not sure if I see any of them here tonight. But, you know, what we explained to them is with the nicer exteriors, the more dense that you have, it actually will look better. The park area is an amenity that the entire development can use. The SID will own that park. And so, the amenities within that park can be used by everyone in Belterra. So, with that, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's really the long and short of it. Again, it's zoned and platted today. We could go out and build those standard houses on the standard sized lots. I don't think that's the best alternative. I don't think the developer, I don't think D.R. Horton thinks that either. And I think we have a favorable recommendation from the planning department as well as the planning commission. So, hopefully, you see the benefit of what we're trying to accomplish here. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Glover.
So, tell me, what's the price difference between going to?
They're the same. It's like, I think they're about, the average is about $400,000. So, there's really no difference. But, but it's a range. The average price is $400,000 in this area.
So, so if I bought a lot that's larger, I would pay $400,000 for the house? And if I bought a house that's got five-foot setback, I'd pay $400,000 for the?
The difference, the difference is the upgrade in the design and the amenities for the park area. So, and throughout the area that you can see the green space that goes through the middle. You know, in all these deals, you know, the home builder ultimately has to, and the developer, they have to recoup their costs that they have plus a reasonable profit, right? And it has to be, you know, according to the market. But you have to recoup your acquisition costs, your grading costs, your public infrastructure costs. And then, of course, the builder has to recapture their building cost and material cost. And then, you know, then you have to have a reasonable profit, both for the developer and for the builder. I mean, it's just the way the real estate world works. I mean, it's, that's not new news. Every single development, every single builder, every single, every single developer in the country, maybe the world, that's how the math works. So, yeah, that's, that's it. But that's, that reflects the costs that we have today. I mean, there is, there's not any new housing really that's coming in under $400,000. And that's, you know, celebrity, that's, you know, D.R. Horton, that's, that's everyone.
Yeah. But it's paying its price, you know? You're paying the same price for a lot that's a lot bigger, that doesn't have a five-foot. You can get that same house and have all that room for the same price?
I don't think side yard setbacks that are that large are desirable. I don't think people really enjoy mowing their 20-foot side yard between the houses. I mean, I, people did not like that product necessarily, from what we understand in talking to D.R. Horton is the people, they don't like that look. They don't like the look where the, there's a huge gap between the houses. They don't like the giant side yard setbacks. And not really setbacks, this is more than just a setback. I mean, this is because of the size of the house on a lot that's 75 to 85 feet in width, it just doesn't fit. It just looks too small for the land area that it's on. So, it wasn't attractive to a number of people. So, D.R. Horton's desire was really to, again, comply with the upgraded design criteria, create amenity space, have what they think and what we think is a better look and feel for the neighborhood. And you don't have, like I said, it isn't necessarily 10-foot side yard setbacks. It's over and above that. It's, it's a giant area between these two houses, because this is their housing type that they're choosing to construct here. Again, they can do that right here, but people aren't, they don't really necessarily like it. And, and people aren't willing to, so if you increase the footprint of the home, now you're looking at a house that's 700,000, 800,000, 900,000. Well, there's only so many people that can buy 700, 800, 900,000 houses. So, you have this huge lot. If you're going to build a house that is fits on that lot, well, guess what? It's not going to be 400,000 anymore. It's going to be, you know, 800,000.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Glover?
No.
Mr. Ingberg.
Right. And that's the other thing. I mean, we.
Just a second. Mr. Ingberg?
Well, you go ahead and answer.
No, I was just, what I was saying is also, the special assessments are paid in residential on against residential lots on a linear front-footage basis. Well, the more units you have, the more units you spread that cost over. So, the streets, the sanitary sewer, the water, and the power are all specially assessed against these lots. So, if you take that cost and you spread it over more units, you have a lower cost. When you have the larger lots, you're not dividing those costs over more lots. You're dividing them over less costs. The cost of the lot goes up dramatically. So, people don't want to pay those special assessment costs. They don't want to pay for the enormous land cost with a house that doesn't really fit on that particular lot. So, the market is telling D.R. Horton and the developer, in this particular case, that they like this look and feel better than what was in the first.
Mr. Ingberg.
Mr. Jobin, just to clarify a couple things. And I'm not going to speak for the entire council, but I think up till now, we've kind of decided that we don't really have a stomach for five-foot setbacks citywide. But, we do consider and perhaps encourage doing smaller side yards like five-foot for creative reasons, for different ways to create housing. If I understand it correctly, this PUD, by doing it this way with the five-foot setbacks, the quality of the home or the living or the dwelling is improved, is better.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, you know, I like the idea of what you're doing here for a couple of reasons. First of all, as you said, the quality will be, will be higher. Second of all, it makes a little bit of sense, because most of developments we see nowadays, because of the high cost of houses and the, and the ground and everything, almost invariably will say, we got to put in some multifamily. We got to put some apartments in there to make it financially work for us. Here, we're kind of doing it, but we're doing it, you're doing it in a different way. You're not creating a three-story mammoth apartment complex. You're doing it by having a little smaller side yards and still having single-family residences. I think the other thing it also does is by you doing this, and the council assuming they approve it, I think it also provides some encouragement to developers to perhaps think about, you know, Papillion, they still like their setbacks. But if we have a more creative product in five-foot side yards, maybe I want to develop some more there. Maybe we'll do some townhomes next time, some duplexes, some variety. So, I like it for that reason. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, some of the things that Councilmember Ingberg just said, I won't strongly disagree with. He talks about creative reasons, creative reasons to create different housing. I'm in favor of that. By, and developers who can come in with those so-called creative reasons that create different housing, I'm all in favor of it. And even doing it in a kind of a pocket area like this, I'm in favor of that. My bigger problem is what you're telling us about what the end result will be when people want to go buy houses. You're saying that the, I think you said to Mr. Glover, that the price of a house in this five-foot setback area is going to be the same as the price of the house in the 10-foot, 400,000 and up. Did I get that right?
Yes, but, but here's the thing. Your, the, the cost is more in the lot on the larger lots than it is in the house. And I think more people, from what I understand and the market is telling them, is that most of the buyers or prospective buyers, they don't want the huge lot with the small house. They want a smaller lot with a nicer house with amenities. And so, that's, that's what the market's telling D.R. Horton and this developer, is that they didn't like this product that is up here. They didn't like the larger lots that have a higher cost, because they have higher special assessments against them, and, and less utilization of the lots itself. They, they wanted something that really utilized the lot more, had a nicer look and feel, and had an amenity attached to it. So, that's, that's really what's driving this.
Okay. Well, here, I won't, I won't ask a lot of questions here, because we've got at least one other. We've got the preliminary plat. And so, this is only a public hearing. My, I guess my big picture is I'm trying, when we're talking about going from 10-foot setbacks to five-foot setbacks, I'm looking to see what benefit this brings to the city. I can clearly see what benefit it brings to the developer. As you've explained, he gets 24 more houses to create money profit off of. But what benefit does that give to the city? And I'm looking at the benefit I would like to see is that it brings people into the city who could not afford the 10-foot setback houses. And you're telling me that's not going to happen here.
So, a couple things going on there, I think, is that, look, if you're looking at buying a new house, that's the cost. And, and you're not going to get it for any cheaper. What I would tell you is that those people that are interested in new housing, when they move into this neighborhood, that opens up existing housing stock for other people to move into that house. And what I would say about the city's benefit, the city's benefit, this is the city's design criteria that they're complying with. I mean, the benefit is that we're following your codes and your design criteria and your requirements under a PUD by providing an amenity. So, I mean, these are the city's goals, if you will, when you're going to approve or utilize a PUD, is that you do have the enhanced design criteria. You do have an amenity, in this particular case, the park. So, that's what the city gets. The city gets a nicer product. So does the homeowner. I think it's a win-win all the way around. I don't think, I don't think, I think it's.
You know, I guess I'm looking at, there was a mention of all the apartments. Well, okay, we have seen over the last several years, a boom, you know, in, you know, 400, 500-unit apartments complexes here in town. And, and they're explaining to us that, well, they all have low vacancy rates, because people can't afford the houses in Papillion, and this is the only way to live in Papillion. Okay, when that person is looking for a house to move out of the apartment, they're not freeing up another house like you just talked about. They're just moving into, from the big three-story apartment building into a, into a single-family house. And I'll, I'll tell you one other thing, and I'll drop it. You said that you think that there are people who dislike the 20-foot distance between houses. Now, I will agree, the pictures you showed there are not the best way to look at that. My house has a 20-foot. I have never, ever, all of the people I represent own houses with 20 feet between the houses. And I have never, ever had any of them tell me, oh, I really hate that. I wish our, I wish my neighbor was closer to me, so I could listen to him as they, as he yells at his wife or something like that. So, no, I look at that and say, no, no, no. Nobody's saying that 20-foot setbacks are bad.
I think the part that maybe you missed is when you have these large lots, the larger lots are more expensive, because there's the larger land mass, there's more special assessments, and you have a house that if, if you have to, if, D.R. Horton won't be able to sell a larger house, because now you're talking about 800,000. If you're talking about affordability, the standard sized lots with a house that fits on it and makes it look like it fits on it is 800,000, 700,000. It's not 400. So, I think that maybe that's the part you missed. I think what I'm saying here is by shrinking the width of the lot and more fully utilizing the lot, creating more units to spread the overall land costs, public improvement costs over more of the lots, that's the benefit here. And, and that's what the market is telling us. And, and the apartment, the apartment, apartment, the number of apartments that are going in is not just Papillion. I can, I, I've done every development almost on both sides of 204th Street, from Elkhorn High School all the way to Gretna. And on both sides of, of 204th Street, and that's Omaha's jurisdiction, that's Gretna's jurisdiction, there are so many apartments, it's incredible. Mr. Fanslaw, who's the planning director, and Bob Stube, who's the public works director in Omaha, you guys have seen all that stuff come through. It isn't just a Papillion issue. It is an Omaha issue. It's a Bennington issue.
Here, I'll just interrupt you. I've read surveys saying that the boom in apartment buildings is because people can't afford to buy the houses. Where else are they going to live? They got to go rent an apartment. And I think I've seen that here in Papillion when we have the multis coming up.
But, but the costs are the cost. I mean, it's, it's not the builder making a fortune. It's the cost of the, of the land, the cost of the public improvements, the public infrastructure. It's the cost of the housing materials and, and everything else that goes into that house. It's the cost that's dramatically higher. It's not that all of a sudden builders are now making 150% profit. I mean, that's not the deal.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Mumgarth?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop here.
All right. Mr. Ingberg.
I just want to apologize to my colleagues on the council, because I've always been a stickler about public hearings and ask questions, nothing else. But I realize now I kind of drifted in opinion when I was asking about the quality of the, the build and so forth. So, I apologize for that. I drifted it out of a public hearing. And I'll try to watch it from now on.
Mr. Fanslaw? Okay. Any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public. Next is item F1, Resolution R250137, a resolution to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the City Park renovation project with Mikuahini contracting in the amount of $7,184,208. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R250137?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, seconded by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Stube.
Yeah. I think it's a great project, and I plan on supporting it. I would kind of like to have Tony maybe kind of go through with regard to when they're going to start, what phase of the park they're going to start in, how long it's going to take. Give us kind of an indication as far as what that timeline is.
And also talk about trees and the orange fence, because we get a lot of questions about the trees taken down and the orange fences.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate that. Right now, as you see, the park has been prepped and ready to go for construction. We were throwing a little bit of a curve ball about three weeks ago, informing us that the project's going to need to be going to the Corps of Engineers for a 48 review. We didn't think we were going to have to do this through this whole process, but unfortunately, we are going to have to do that, and so it's under review right now. We are hopeful that both the NRD and the Corps, they have promised us to expedite that review. But when that would come in, it's hard to say right now. But every- But everything's to them as far as their review to let us start working. John Haney Jr.'s in the audience tonight too, from Miko Hany, has been a very good partner through this whole thing. But right now, what has been done is all the prep work to get them involved with starting to build stuff. You've seen trees being removed, Mayor, you're correct. There's been a few trees removed. Only a few of them were impacted by the design that had to be removed. The vast majority of the trees that were moved in City Park were damaged, actually, per the storm of last year. And so, we were wanting to take those out, and so we got those out as well. Yes, the orange fence is up. We will continue to mow and take care of that park like we do just any other time we take care of city parks. So, it will not look shaggy or overgrown, but yes, there's some things that we're going to have to wait on right now. But maybe John can speak to his part of it as far as ordering and looking at the design. But overall, I think it's a, I'm with you. From all my years with the city, I think this is a generational project that will impact many, many people for years to come. And the improvements that you will see down there will be well worth the wait.
And would you anticipate that it would be completed?
We're still shooting on, and we've talked to the Miko boys as well, as far as, they have some time built in there where they would be down over the winter, and we're not saying we're going to have an open winter at all. I'm not saying that at all. But I'm hopeful we do this year, so we can get still moving in the winter, and I think they're willing to do that as well. We're still hopeful that we're going to be done by Papillion Days next year.
Mr. Gaines.
Two quick questions. Are we still going to have the market there on Wednesday after the completion and then Papillion Days? And then what impact, S3, what impact are those two events going to have on the improvements that we're making?
That's a great question, Jason. Through this whole process, those two events were key and center as far as how this park was going to be designed. We've worked in meetings with the community foundation as far as Papillion Days and how that will lay out. Actually had a meeting with the carnival operator during this last event to get his take on it, and I think we're going to be able to help them and not have very much disruption in their layout, which they have become so familiar with. And so, the vendor fair will have what I think is the largest improvement, or the large eight-to-10-foot wide sidewalks that really impacted people who had limited mobility to go down and enjoy the vendor fair through the park. That was always a key for us. And so, looking at that and then working with Tracy and her team over at the rec department for the farmer's market as well, there'll be plenty of room for vendors, plenty of room for food trucks, and especially when you can give the public what they need and what they have asked us for, is improved amenities with concrete walkways throughout.
Thank you. So we've got a motion and a second. Proponents? Do you want to introduce yourself? I don't know if all the council knows you. Come on up. Just for the record, if you state your name and address. And the agenda's winding down, so you can do a little bit of a commercial too.
Do I got to hit a button or anything? Oh, I'm good. Okay. I'm John Haney Jr. with Miko Hany Contracting, the general contractor on the City Park project. I'm kind of the project manager and then love our full-time onsite superintendent as well. So, our office is actually located right down the street on 84th, closer to the interstate there. So, that's where we reside, real close. Echoing kind of what Tony said, we're throwing a little bit of a curveball. We got going, we're in a little bit of a hold right now until that permit comes through, so I'm sure you're going to get some questions on why things aren't happening. But until that comes through, there are things happening in the background. You know, the submittal process and everything that we work with the design team and the owners rep on for, you know, all your playground equipment, all the, you know, all the long lead items, you know, we got electrical gear, panels, you know, everything that goes into it, all the stuff that we need to get approved and make sure we're providing what the design documents say, that is all ongoing still. So that's kind of what's happening in the background, so that when we do get that go-ahead, we hit the ground running, you know, we get the storm structures and everything ordered made. That stuff takes time anyway, so that's what's going on right now.
Appreciate your work you did on First Street Plaza about 10 or 12 years ago.
Thank you.
That turned out real well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Worked with Tony and a few of your people on the budget. I think it's a good number. There is a contingency built into that number as well. Roughly 3% is in that number that was showing up there. So, there's some leeway, and for those that don't know, that allowance is there as a buffer for maybe unforeseen, but everything that would go through that allowance is brought to the owner's attention and approved by everybody before anything is used out of that fund. And anything left is actually returned to the owner. So, we got some leeway there too, in that number, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thanks again. Next is item F2, Resolution R. 250139, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Prairie Queen Mixed Use Development Agreement. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Any proponents? Welcome.
Hi, Laura Tarpenia, 9140 West Dodge Road, Suite 285, Omaha, 68114. I feel like the staff report's very well done, provides a good amount of background. I just wanted to expand a little further, and the driving force behind the request is really based off of our architect's design criteria. The site area specifically we're talking about called out for buildings we had previously, we've previously built before, and that was a four-story structure. So the mixed-use agreement currently says up to three stories, so we are asking that that get corrected within this amendment. And then, the roof, the height constraint, the architect would like to allow more space for that so that we can maintain a pitch that's consistent with the pitch of the other roofs out at Prairie Queen. So, generally feel like this provides a more consistent design opportunity. And specific to the block that we're intending to use the zoning criteria, we're also trying to add a more traditional apartment product type as far as a garden-style building, which will allow us to expand our unit floor plans and hopefully expand the square footage ranges that we have available, which also implies hopefully being able to expand our rent price points as well. So, Prairie Queen has large units. On average, they're 1,276 square feet. Industry average is probably 895 square feet. So this traditional product type will allow us to have something that's more consistent with garden-style elevator buildings. So, that's my brief background, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents or opponents? Oh, Mr. Fanslaw.
I have a quick question for you. Would you say that the product that you're putting, that the change in the height, right?
Yeah.
To build a building that you said your architect's doing, would you say that that's hitting a certain market in Papillion? Do you see any problem leasing these up? This is something that you think this market needs?
I would say yes. Yep, definitely. And one of the things we've strived for at Prairie Queen, which was kind of by accident, the missing middle product type is like, kind of like copying a Dundee neighborhood, if you will. And so we have these different unit floor plans, they ended up larger than industry average. But one of the benefits of the design of the variety of unit floor plans we have is it promotes the ability to kind of age in place or fit the needs of individuals in different stages of life. And so by making this adjustment to the building height to offer the traditional, more traditional unit floor plan size, we feel like we're expanding then people's choices to continue to kind of have a place that meets what they need in the moment.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Oh, Mr. Mungard.
I'll just want to tell you, I'm very pleased with what you're proposing to do because that's, the variety is great in your development. That's one of the best things about the Prairie Queen. You drive through there, and there's housing for all sorts of people there. This is changing the appearance, moves it a little further away from the standard three-story apartment complex and into more of a residential-type environment, and I'm very happy to see you doing it.
Anybody else? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 250139?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Fanslaw. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. F3, related item to the previous public hearing while back. Resolution R. 250140, public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as a replating of lots 310 to 407 inclusive, all lots G through I inclusive Belterra, generally located on the southwest corner, South 114th Street and Schramm Road, applicants Felker Family Farms. It's a public hearing, I'll carry all the comments over for the record. Anything new?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. This is obviously a replat, or preliminary plat for a replat from 97 lots to 121 lots, so an increase of 24 lots. One bit of clarification, I sat down and talked to Jason Thielen. He said that if they were the standard-sized lots today, they would be more within this PUD area because of the special assessments. So, they wouldn't be $400,000, they would probably be more in the $430,000 to $450,000. So I misspoke on that. I guess the, and it makes sense that the cost would increase by the, you know, larger lot and the larger special assessment. So, with that clarification, that's really all I have, and I'm here for questions.
Now, Mr. Glover, did that answer your question?
Yeah. It made sense.
Yeah, right.
If it didn't make sense, I could give a lot that size for the same amount of money as I did with five-foot setbacks. And I think it makes sense.
They would be $30,000 to $50,000 more.
There you go.
Mr. Mungard.
Okay, I won't ask a bunch of questions and cover the same land again, but I'm going to have to vote against this because, again, I'm looking to see, I'm all in favor of PUD. The pocket area and all this kind of is a good idea, that's the way development should go. But again, what benefit does this bring to the city? And the benefit that I'm speaking about is a goal of making housing in Papillion available to a wider range of buyers, and I'm not seeing this does that. So, until cutting back, going to five-foot setbacks gets closer to that goal of mine, I can't support it.
Mr. Fanslaw? Oh, Mr. Gaines.
Are we on council discussion at this point?
We are in council discussion.
Okay. So, I have...
No, we're in public hearing. I'm sorry, we're in public hearing.
I'll reserve my comments till we get there.
Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 250140? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Glover. Now, council discussion. Ms. Hoak.
So, this proposal gave me a lot of heartburn when it was before us at Planning Commission. And I likened it to an impossible choice. When you want someone to do something, you give them two options, and you make one of them really, really unappealing, right? You can finish your dinner, Mr. Mungard, or you can go to bed right now. So, when you go out and look at Belterra, it has not, it is not now what it was when we, on the commission voted for it and when council voted for it. It is not that anymore. And one of the things that we heard at Planning Commission was from the homeowners in those lots to the north about how awful what was to their east was, and how much they didn't want us to make smaller lots and put more awful to the south. They can put more of those vinyl-clad postage stamp houses on those lots that are there right now. If you, in the staff report, go back to the Planning Commission report, and you can look at the vinyl finishes that are on the houses and the fronts, the design of the houses, that they can put there by right now with what we've voted on in the past. And then you can look at the stone and the hardy board finishes, the variety of faces to the houses. And in my opinion, at least, that is a better look, a better fit and feel. I understand the desire to retain larger lots. However, having just attended the housing resiliency discussion, I know that hardy board and stone is going to stand up a lot better than vinyl with our storms and such. And I firmly believe that in our younger generations, there is less desire to spend time out in the yard and maintaining the yard, and there's a much larger move towards the experiences of life, but still having a home to come home to. And I think that there is a market and a desire, I hear that from my younger colleagues at work, that they don't want a huge house and huge lot to maintain, and they want something smaller. And we're not solving the affordable, you know, the filling in that missing middle by putting this PUD in, in terms of price change. However, we're certainly not solving it by letting them put what they're already going to put out there, either. And so, I'm in favor of this because it's a better product for the market.
Mr. Gaines.
So, I appreciate your comments. Just going, I want to talk a little bit about precedent. And one of the, excuse me, one of the things that has always made, and the rest of the council members here, it's a broken record because I've said it many times, one of the things that made Papillion unique was our 10-foot setbacks. If you drive through neighborhoods in Omaha, you see houses that are bunched up on top of each other. You drive through Papillion, for the most part, and you see 10-foot setbacks, which 20 feet between houses, minimum. That's one of the things that made it special to live here. So, yes, it costs a little bit more to live here, property taxes are a little bit higher, you pay a little more for a lot. That's what made us special. And what we're doing right now tonight is what I discussed several weeks ago, right? Maybe a few weeks before you got on the council, is that we're setting a precedent. Our precedent in the past has been 10-foot setbacks. Then we switch to, okay, well, if it's a maintenance-free community, we can go to five-foot setbacks. Then we went to, if it's a PUD, then we can do five-foot setbacks if they put a little park in there. And if you see, these developers are noticing what we're doing. A vote for five-foot setbacks tonight, we might as well just give up on 10-foot setbacks. We have no argument going further if we approve this tonight because we are setting a precedent. The next builder that comes into this room and asks for five-foot setbacks, what rationale are we going to use to say, "This is why we're not going to give it to you, but we gave it to Mr. Jobin and we gave it to the last community that came in here, even though they weren't maintenance-free communities, that's what we're doing." There's no other way to explain this. We keep making exception after exception after exception to have five-foot setbacks. So, after this vote tonight, any developer can come in here and say, "Well, this is what you guys do now." Just because you put a little park in the neighborhood doesn't mean we change our whole community. I'm not resistant to change, but I'm resisting, resistant to changing that Papillion is special, that we're not just like every other community. So if you can't afford to buy a lot in Papillion, then, and the yard's too big, then move to a community that allows five-foot setbacks, or if you prefer one-foot setbacks, or, but that has always been our standard, and tonight we will erode that standard by voting without any good rationale to allow smaller setbacks. And, Mr. Jobin, if I could ask you just a couple of questions?
Yes.
Okay, so, the cost of the home is the same, right?
Essentially, yes.
But what you're saying, there's a little...
Well, it's more because of the elevated design criteria, so you have the hardy board, the stone, the enhancements to the architecture.
Gotcha. What's the difference in the lot cost? Just, not an exact, I know you don't know an exact cost.
It's probably $30,000 to $50,000 difference because you have the area of the land, the land cost, and then you have the special assessments that are on a linear front-footage basis, so they're on a larger front linear, front-footage linear basis. So, the special assessment costs on a per-lot basis would be higher as well.
Okay. So, when you were showing those pictures, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear because you were talking about building larger homes to fill the lot, what is the size of the setbacks on the pictures that you just showed up here on the screen? Are they 10-foot setbacks?
Those are, if you want to pull that... So these lots right here are standard-sized lots with the standard 10-foot... lots with the standard 10-foot side yard setbacks on all of them. And those are the, those are the lots that D.R. Horton built upon, that the neighbors in the Bridgewater area did not like. They didn't, they didn't like looking at those houses because they thought there was just unused area between the houses. So, we felt that, based upon that, with the PUD and the, the smaller five-foot side yard setbacks, we would, and the enhanced design criteria and the amenity, we had a much better product, we felt, than what D.R. Horton is currently building here with the standard lot sizes, which again, are between 75 and 85 feet front in width versus 55 to 65 feet in width.
Right, but I just want to, I'm not going to beat a dead horse on this one, but-
No, it's okay.
When you said, well, if we build a larger home to fill that space, you wouldn't be able to build a larger home because those are standard 10-foot setbacks. The pictures that were actually shown up there?
No, I think, I think those were in excess of 10 feet. So you had the 10 feet, but then there were smaller footprints of the house, so you had, I don't know the exact measurements, but we could give those for you. This is a preliminary plat, I can come back with more information about costs and everything else, and the actual distance between those houses that I was showing you in the pictures. But, but they are in excess of 10 feet on both sides because they were smaller lot.
That's where I'm going with this, is if they're in excess of 10 feet, then why wouldn't, why not just move the lots to a position where the setbacks can still be 10 feet, instead of reducing the size of the setbacks?
Well, but then you just increase the other side, right? I mean, if you, if you're going to put the houses to the 10-foot and you still have the 75 to 85-foot lot width, then you're going to have a much larger area on the other side. Because they're building this house because that's what the market is saying people want. People can't afford the larger house that fills the lot to the 10-foot side yard setback on both sides, because again, now you're doubling the cost of the house, now you're looking at 750,000, $800,000. So, what we're talking about here is building essentially the same house on a lot that has smaller, you know, width to it, 55 to 65 feet versus 75 to 85.
So, so the outlined area in green, there's no house, there's no homes built on that area currently, right?
Currently, no, but, but it is platted and zoned right now for the standard sized lots, it's just like this here.
Right, I, I understand, I'm just trying to get to a specific point. So instead of reducing the setbacks to five-foot, why not reorganize all of those lots so that there's 10-foot setbacks and then build a smaller home in them, instead of what they, what the pictures show where there's in excess of 10-foot setbacks? So you might have 30 feet between a home, why not reconfigure the lots so the setbacks are still 10 feet?
Yeah, I'll let Jason Thielen, who will answer that question.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100. Fact is, you don't get enough lots to justify the cost to do the replats and add the extra infrastructure. So when you, when you replat a property, say you go from 97 to, and I don't know how many we would get, call it, you get an extra 10%, you're defeating the purpose of replating those lots and spending extra money, because you're going to put in extra sanitary services, water services, and you don't get enough density to justify that cost. You might as well just build what you got. And that's literally the math, right? So, I know you don't want to accept it, but that five feet per lot is, it's a significant amount of a cost to the house. And so if we want to get to a market rate house that people can afford, quote unquote, we've got to accept the fact that smaller footprint, smaller lots is how you get there. I could fray that infrastructure over 24 lots instead of 107, makes it cheaper for everybody.
That is your question?
It does, and I, unfortunately, I can't support the project. I'm not, number one, it's precedent, and there's no argument in the world that's going to make me believe that somehow in the last six months, we've become less of a place that now we allow smaller setbacks. But I also think that this has a lot to do with profit, which I certainly understand, because I'd want, I want to make more money too if I was the builder, but I appreciate your guys' time tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Fenslow.
So, I don't know if I have any questions. I don't, I don't think I have any questions, I just, I'm going to make a few comments. I'm gonna, I'm going to support this project. And, I mean, we had, we just had a retreat, and we talked about some things, we talked about different types of housing, we talked about pocket neighborhoods, we talked about maybe not having 400, in my example, 400 lots of five-foot setbacks, but part of a larger subdivision that could put a product on the market that people want. And I got to believe that if the developers going through the trouble of getting this reentitled, that they do believe that there's a market out there for this type of house at this price point, at these setbacks. People obviously want this product, so that's why I'm going to support it. I don't think we can build a community with all 10-foot setbacks, side yard setbacks, and apartments. Now, there's a lot in between, but this is, in my opinion, this is something that's in between what we've typically seen in Papillion and large apartments. So, there's a market for this, I'm going to support that market. We have, we have this tool in place, it's, it's quote unquote, "on the books" in Papillion, yet every time, I don't think, Jason, I don't think this, I got your question, you were trying to ask Larry on how many lots, that's why I pointed at you, but we've approved five-foot setbacks in the past. So, I got to disagree a little bit that this isn't setting a precedent, it's just something else that we've done, and maybe that is what you meant, but again, this isn't one subdivision, all five-foot setbacks, it's a variety of housing in a pretty small area, not just this portion of the plat, but the larger plat itself. It's, within that neighborhood, it's providing a product, a different product, that people obviously want. So, personally, I think the, the example that Mr. Jobin showed us with the D.R. Horton house, the standard house they build, and those setbacks and the distance between the houses, I won't call them setbacks, to me, that looks a little ridiculous. I don't know why we would want to build a neighborhood that looked like, all like that. So, there's a lot going on, we're trying to put different products, how, different products of housing out in the market. I want something besides 10-foot side yard setbacks in a single-family house, I live in one of those, I like it. But other people want this type of product, so for all those reasons, for everything we've talked about, different products, different housing for different types of people, I'm going to be supporting this tonight.
Ms. Hope.
Sorry that I haven't been here for the what makes Papillion special portion of the side yard setback discussion. You might argue that 26, 27 years ago, you could argue that what made Papillion special was if there was one high school and the whole community was unified behind it. You could go back even further and argue that it was a two-lane road from Omaha to Papillion, and that's what made it special, is it wasn't easy to get here. That's changed. You could argue that there weren't as many apartment buildings, that's changed. If appearances are the only thing that makes Papillion special, I think that that's a very flimsy foundation upon which to build the character of a city. Appearance is part of it, and that's why we have worked with the planning department to improve design standards in many, many ways, create overlay districts, but I reject the notion that it is only 10-foot side yard setbacks that makes Papillion special.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
5 A's, 2 Nays by Mungard and Gaines.
Motion passes. Next is item F.4, Resolution R. 250141, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit for the property legally described as lots 1 through 14 inclusive and outlots A through D inclusive, old public works generally located at 200 North Adams. The applicant's urban waters, urban waters at old public works. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Proponents, welcome.
Hi, Laura Tarpinia, 9140, sorry, 9140 Dodge Street, Suite 285, Omaha 68114. So I don't have really anything new, I feel like we've obviously been here before, this project has been before you before, so I am here if there's further discussion to be had, I'm excited to be at this point. So again, if there's anything remaining you'd like to know of me, I'm, I'm here for questions.
Appreciate it. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 250141?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover. Seconded by Councilman Fenslow. Council discussion. I do want to make one comment, just because of some questions I got. One of the news stations did a story on the project yesterday about, about the redevelopment happening, and their lead was apartments are coming to downtown Papillion, and I had a couple of different people reach out to me of, what are you doing bringing a big apartment building to downtown Papillion? And as I talked to them about the project, one of them said, why can't you do like a fourplex over by the library? And I said, well, that's exactly what this is, is fourplex and duplexes. Oh, it's not a big apartment building? No. Oh, I like that project. And then the other one is, why are you bringing a big apartment building to downtown Papillion? You're destroying the character of downtown Papillion. For years, we've been talking about this project, I thought you were going to bring something out like Prairie Queen. That's exactly what this is, and it's the same developer. Oh, I like that project. So, I say that a little bit because we did get one email, kind of in that same vein, and so we do, we will note that for the record, but I did want to clarify, I think that news story confused some people, but had a couple of different conversations, and I think it clarified at least the ones that I talked to. Mr. Fenslow, Mr. Gaines.
I just wanted, did anybody reach back out to the person that wrote the email?
I just saw it when we got here.
Okay. And somebody intend to reach out, maybe educate the constituent on that?
Yeah, we'll do that. Mr. Mungard.
Well, yeah, this, this citizen focuses on the use of the old Public Works Department building, which was the focus of that news report. I see her point, she says, no, 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 you put some commercial in there, you don't make it into four apartments. I see her point, and yeah, that in many ways would be the preference. We've tried that, it, you know, we've held that out for how many years now, for people to do just that, and it ain't working. I guess it's, you know, and I reached the point of saying, well, you go with the next best thing, you don't just let the building sit there, because we've learned from the past that it is not going to be commercial. So, I recognize this person's point of view, at one point I held that point of view, I have to reject it now because it ain't going to work.
I held the same view for quite a while on the commercial side. Spend, it's over 5,000 square feet, that's pretty big, like a restaurant or something. And actually, the planning department, as they got to looking at it too, said, you start thinking of the parking needs for 5,000, you would almost take the land behind it to turn it into a parking lot, and you'd end up losing the, the unique houses that Urban Waters is bringing. So, I too have changed my, my mind on it, on what the market's doing and what's good for downtown. Mr. Fenslow.
Yeah, so, I think it's a great project, I think it's exactly what downtown needs. I don't know how much housing we need in downtown, but we need some fresh, new housing. This will offer an option for people to live downtown in an apartment, those people will hopefully work, live, obviously, and play in downtown Omaha, or downtown Papillion, excuse me. But I think it's important, I think it's an important product to have in our community, and I also think, I'll say it again, I think, obviously the market is going to bear out here, and it, this, this will be a good project for downtown.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
7 A's, 2 Nays.
Motion passes. I again want to thank you, we've been working on this for seven years, eight years, something like that. It's been an extremely long public process. We did an RFP, when, when Public Works was building the new building, we talked publicly about redeveloping that site for a long time. We issued a public RFP for developers to respond, Urban Waters did respond on this project, and a number of public hearings, a number of votes to accept that, and then a lot changed throughout there. We had flood map changes, we ended up being, having the opportunity to buy a refuse facility and cleaning that up to make the site better. We had flood plain changes, we had COVID, we had supply chains, we had interest rates go up, every one of those seemed to add another year to the process. And I'll say, probably most developers would have walked away from the project, so, big thank you for you guys being partners and staying with us. Thank you. Appreciate it. I think it's all the regular agenda items, committees, ad hoc, audit ad hoc, Mr. Ingberg.
Thank, thank you Mayor. The ad hoc audit committee's been working on an agreement with a firm to do our audit. We've reviewed two proposals, the two proposals we received, and members of the committee have scored them on technical and other ways, and after discussion tonight, and I appreciate Nancy Hypes and Amber Powers and Mark Sturzmer for the work they put in on it, but after reviewing both of them, we came up with a recommendation, we're going to get sent to the council, probably to vote on the first meeting in August. And then meantime, the administration will notify the two firms that put in proposals of the result.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any, no other committees met, any comments from the floor? Ms. Holder, you were appointed or elected as the president of the mayor's youth council, congratulations. So, that's for 25 and 26. Appreciate everything you do. Any comments from the floor? Council comments? Mr. Gaines.
So, I did send an email about this, but I just wanted to publicly thank everybody involved, Tony and your guys. Hallock Park Arboretum and the trail system looks absolutely phenomenal. So, it's been a night and day over the last couple of years, so I just really wanted to thank you. I was, I was shocked, I hadn't been through there for a couple of months, and I rode through there and I was like, wow, this is great, the trails are great, the highly landscaped area in the middle. One thing I did want to ask you about, is there a map of the different kinds of trees?
There is, but you would never be able to decipher it, it's in my office and it's so old. You know, that's one thing that the tree board has been investigating, Jason, is maybe getting GIS in there and actually going to each tree and, and marking each tree, now that we have them marked. I've been a little cautious because of the vast amount of ash trees that are going to be coming out of that in about this year and next year. They, they've really been wanting to hold off until we get the ash trees out, and then we start diversifying the landscape even more with different varieties of trees, but it is something that they have been discussing, we just haven't pulled the trigger yet, but it's, it's a great idea.
Yeah, and the other thing regarding the ash trees, not that I know a whole lot about it, but I know that the ash borer was an issue, and secondly, have we been affected by the fungus? Because I heard that they, some of these ash trees are actually modifying their DNA to be able to fight the fungus, is that an issue that we've been?
Yeah, a couple of our arborists did attend a class on that about two years ago, and we saw this happen right in front of Hickory Estates along Centennial Road, just to the west of 72nd Street. And what they told me is, boss, let's hold off on it, let's see what happens. And what happened was is they all came back strong. So even though we probably do have that occurring, I'm just, I'm just telling everybody out there that we're really starting to see the dominating features of Emerald Ash Borer start to hit. And I know that the seven we took down last year in the arboretum, they were just full of it. And so, I'm trying to temper everybody's expectations as that, yep, we will take a look and try to stay away from them for a while, but there's going to be a point where we're going to have to start doing some big time removals.
Well, I just publicly wanted to thank you, I really appreciate what you've done down there, so.
I'll pass that on to the crew. Any other council discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, Ms. Hope.
So, I haven't been on the council very long, but I had a very rapid run-through and a series of meetings with all of the department heads and chiefs in the city, and I thanked each of them individually, but I want to publicly thank everybody who took the time very generously to meet with me, and in particular, Robin Lance, who had the unenviable duty of finding time to fit all of those in so that I could get through them in time to be well-versed in everything before the, before the council retreat. So, I appreciate all of that, and wow, there's a lot to this.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, again, I want to thank everybody for participating in the council retreat, that's a really long day, and a lot of it's me rambling on a lot of items, but I think that getting away once every three years and really stepping up to look at big picture and how everything's fit has been really important, so I just want to thank you for investing that time, it helps us tremendously. Also, as we learned from the retreat, we're at that stage in the budget where we're fine tuning that, overviewed that, got some additional feedback we're trying to incorporate, and so just a reminder from, like we do with the traditional one-on-ones, if there's anything else you see, bring that to Ms. Powers, Mr. Sturzmer, myself, and then- else you see, bring that to Ms. Powers, Mr. Sturzmer, or myself, and then we'll be wrapping up the budget recommendation that'll go to you. Then I think the only other thing, two veteran-related things. Remember last year, we had that event with the Nation of Patriots where they had that flag that was flown over the U.S. Capitol and then brought here, and it launched and went on a tour of all 50 states and came back here? They do that every year, and as they were going through Nebraska, they purposely stopped at the, at the memorial. So it's become a pretty significant event at a national level, so appreciated seeing them. And then Mr. Sturzmer, Ms., Mr. Gaines, I mean, not Mr. Gaines, Mr. Gowen and I met with the Vietnam Memorial today. Remember the memo of understanding that we always had with them? They envision a potential education center. And that may be taking some good momentum. There's some good progress going on that. And so we were working with them on, on the scope of what that might be. And I think the only other thing is the Papillion Community Foundation. I think everybody's met her, but Angie Bruna is the new executive director, and she started this week. So if you do anything with the foundation, be sure to welcome her. Anything else from council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, seconded by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven As, zero Nays.
We are adjourned.